All right, this is the Cortez City Council Work Session. Today is Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023, and the time is 6:31 PM. I'll call this meeting to order, and we'll start with A on our agenda, an interview of candidate for Planning and Zoning Commission. M, I'd like to invite you up to the podium. So we have five questions for you, and so we'll just kind of go down on the line and ask those to you. So, thank you for being here. Robert, do you want to start us off?
Why are you interested in being a member of the Planning Commission?
Oh, sorry, and make sure your mic is green.
Green is good, right? Well, it's going to sound cheesy, but it is sincere. I think that you have a civic duty to give skills that you have back to your community. And so I spent three years on the Planning Commission in Hayden before I moved here last October. And like I said in my letter, we dealt with a lot of the same issues that it seems like you guys are dealing with or getting ready to deal with. And so despite me being like, "Oh, I'm not going to really get that involved," I was like, "Ooh, I kind of feel like my skills apply here." So, yeah, that's why.
And I apologize, I didn't give you a chance to introduce yourself.
Oh, yeah, I'm Emily Waldron, I go by M, and I'm an applicant for the Planning and Zoning Commission. I've been in Cortez almost a year, I've lived on the Western Slope for ten years, and in Colorado my whole life.
Hi, M.
Hi.
What do you think are the chief functions of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
So, kind of on like a day-to-day basis, they're approving various applications. I'm not, I haven't dug super deeply into the code as far as what is allowed by administrative use by right and what gets approved by the Commission and also by the council, but reviewing those applications for various developments. And then occasionally, sometimes on, you know, like more of a decades-long scale, the Commission is responsible for looking forward for the town in conjunction with the council. So, you know, developing like master use plans, reviewing the code and updating it as necessary as times change and things like that, but that, you know, thankfully does not happen all the time.
What do you think is the biggest planning issue facing the city?
From going to meetings where the, with Nancy, it seems like one of the biggest issues is maybe an outdated and kind of cumbersome municipal code that needs to be modernized to meet both the needs that we have here right now and also needs that we see coming in the future.
Welcome. What key contributions would you make should you be selected to serve as a member of the Planning Commission?
So, my day job, I do regulation for the state of Colorado for oil and gas. So, I work with the Planning and Permitting Department reviewing oil and gas development plans. So I think I bring kind of that, that other side of kind of like regulation and permitting and planning, kind of on an even deeper level, and having, you know, like some subject matter expertise in like stormwater management and different things like that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, good evening. Planning and zoning meets on the first Tuesday of each month at 6:30 PM, and a second meeting could be called on the third Tuesday of each month if needed. Work sessions are held at 5:00 PM occasionally. Would you have a problem attending the work sessions and meetings?
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all we had for you, and we really appreciate your interest in the board, and I think we're going to make a decision tonight on our agenda for the vacancy. So, thank you, M.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to B on our agenda, proposal for annual renewal fees for marijuana retailers. Presented by Drew.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Give us one second, my presentation should come up momentarily here. There we go. Okay, as mentioned, this is after several months of work on this and collaboration with the marijuana retailers and outlets, it really has become clear that they are struggling in the business world. As we all know, other states have legalized and the situation has really changed. As part of your packet on this, you actually have a sheet that spells out the current situation. I would like to make one correction for you on that, and it is the page here that says Cortez Marijuana Retailers is what you should see, and on the left it says city sales tax revenue. That's actually a typo, that should read marijuana sales tax revenue, so that does not represent all city sales tax, just marijuana. So, if you look through that column right there, you can see where we started in 2015, where that really inflated in 21, 20 and 21, started down slightly in '22, and then in '23 it's really come down. In fact, when I do the projection on that now and throughout the year, we're really landing between 2017, or almost down to 2016 levels, going to be 2016 and 2017 levels. And we, as a city, we recognize that the struggles that the marijuana industry is having in our city and met with them. There was actually a couple of council members that were there. I remember Councilmember Spruill was there, and I believe Councilmember Yazi, if I recall. But we met with them, they came in with a whole bunch of ideas on what they thought would help them, and I'm presenting those to you tonight and what we feel like we can do as a city. So, as I already mentioned, we're having declining marijuana sales tax, or sales tax revenues, and that's pretty self-explanatory, but again, those causal factors are Colorado legalized in 2000, recreational marijuana in 2012, and then Arizona, New Mexico, and Utah all have various levels of legalization now that has seemingly really hurt us, especially in New Mexico, where if you are to go to Farmington, and I'm sure we all have, there's marijuana shops all over the place. So, it's really kind of hurt our business. Now, we did meet with the marijuana retailers, and we discussed the state of the industry. Certainly, they're declining revenues and the struggles that they are having, their local concerns, you know, Cortez only, and then received their suggestions. When we received it, looked at all the suggestions, and we weighed them and looked at what we can really do, it really boiled down to the only thing we can really do is lower fees. So, on this slide, you'll see that the current revenue or renewal fee for retail and medical marijuana is $5,250 per year. That was set because we didn't know what the outcomes were going to be. We didn't know if we're going to have to hire more police officers. We did, we just didn't know, so it was set rather high, and by the way, most other places did that as well. Now, we currently do not charge an additional renewal fee if there's a cultivation operation there, and then also on top of the $5,250 per year, these outlets also need to pay another $2,130 a year to the state of Colorado. And then annual renewal fees in our surrounding areas, we're way out of whack with them. They range between about $1,500 and $2,500 a year, we're working up on the $5,000 year range. Excuse me. So currently, as of 2023, these are our licenses here below, we have seven retails, three medical, and then two cultivation licenses as well. So, we are proposing that we bring those fees down to be more in line with other municipalities that have similar operations in our area and surrounding region here, but also to bring that closer in line to what we charge for liquor. So, we're proposing that we change our renewal fee from $5,250 to $1,200 for each for medical and retail. Now, not every outlet has those, and I think we're only, Linda, down to what, two or three medical outlets. So that's not going to affect everybody. Then we are requesting that we increase the fee for new marijuana licenses that apply to the city of Cortez, it's currently $7,000 for a new license only. We're suggesting we increase that to $12,000, and then this will help us cover any increase in staff time due to rezoning regulations and fewer compatible commercial locations. So, although we can't really just say we don't want any more marijuana outlets, and certainly the free market needs to come into play here somewhat, but I think right now, you know, this is a good option for us to try to raise that, to perhaps, you know, discourage a little bit the need for new ones that's going to compete and bring the whole market down. Then, as I already mentioned, why the renewal fees were set a little bit higher. So, the current annual renewal fees for marijuana versus liquor. So marijuana, as we already mentioned, currently a $52.50, the state's $21.30 a year, and the annual liquor annual fees are, here in Cortez, range between 104 and 175, depending on the type of license, and then they have to pay 225, or ranging between 225 and 875, and those fees are projected to increase in 2024. So you can see where we're getting a little closer if we were to set it at 1,200, and then the Cortez annual occupation tax ranges between 100 and 325. So, we're trying to get the marijuana, perhaps we're suggesting anyway, that we bring that a little bit closer to what the liquor licenses are. So, the question really is, so what's the potential loss to city revenues? Well, currently, our revenues are 52,500, that includes three medical licenses and obviously three retail, or seven retail licenses. We estimate that for 2024, were we to take this course of action at $1,200 a license, would make that total license to $9,600? Or, sorry, our potential loss overall is going to be $42,900. So, instead of the, would drop from 52,500 to $9,600, and so on down the line there, as you can see, but we do potentially stand to lose $43,000. But for, you know, a business like this, we can withstand that $43,000 relatively easy, where this is something I think, although it's not going to move the needle, it's really not going to save anybody, but it's not only a good gesture, I feel like it's the right thing to do to bring those fees more in line with reality and do what we can to buoy up these businesses. So with that being said, that's kind of the short and long of it. I was hoping to open up for discussion and get councils' feel on this and a direction to go, and depending on your discussion, we will come to you with a formal proposal that you can vote on.
So, just to be clear for myself, Drew, and also for the public, the $1,200, so let me back up, I guess the three medical licenses are also in conjunction with a retail location, right?
Correct.
So, we're, so those folks would pay 1,200 for a medical and then 1,200 for a retail as well?
Correct, so each license would be $1,200.
Okay.
Where right now they're paying the $5,250 each license.
Okay, thanks.
Is any of this earmarked money, or does it go straight to the general fund, or?
It goes straight to the general fund.
So, is this going to affect any law enforcement in the area of marijuana?
Well, what we have learned from all this is actually law enforcement has had to do very little what to do with this. It's really in their best interest to follow the rules exactly, and Linda, weigh in here a little bit, but my understanding is we have had virtually no problems with them. They, they want to comply, and it's in their best interests, and that, if they fall out of compliance, it can really, really hurt them financially. So, no, we, we really haven't had to do much with law enforcement.
And I'll just say that, you know, back in the day, we took the approach, you know, we covered the medical license first, and then we went and talked about retail, and the idea really was about having caregivers that weren't necessarily licensed in a certain way, we weren't really sure who they were growing for, where the operations were, that they could be next door to someone's home, and they might not even know it until there was a problem. And so the idea behind creating medical and then retail facilities was that transparency piece, that open piece, and even back in the day, 12 years ago, they were very open to the police department coming in, like literally you could walk in the door, if you're a PD person, and ask questions and check things out. So, I'm not surprised to hear that that's still the case, that they're supportive of that support.
Yeah, and a couple of years ago, then Mayor Levy and I actually were invited to a grand opening of the cultivation down at Chronic Therapy, and although we were, we were there solely kind of as a ribbon-cutting sort of visit, it really turned into, hey, what do you want to see? Even us, and we're not law enforcement, we're nothing, we just were viewed as city officials, what do you want to see? They were very good to work with, and I have personally found them to be excellent to work with, we just haven't had to do a lot of input at all.
Did you have something, Robert? I saw Robert's mic green earlier, but...
Yeah, I was just going to ask about the timeline. Would, would you intend to bring this to council as an individual item or just as part of the fee setting at the end of the year?
Well, we'd bring it as an individual item because we would need to pass an ordinance on it to get that changed, and then we would add that to our fees for 2024. All we would do is for the budget is lower that revenue line to reflect what we think will happen.
The high fees that we're charging, what is the marijuana industry in Cortez getting for their buck that they're spending?
A license, a license to operate. Because outside of that, I mean, we help them, and Linda's certainly been fantastic to help them, she's very knowledgeable, but other than that, we have to provide them, they're pretty independent, we do not give them, other than what we're trying to do now for them, any real support, they don't need it. And so, that's a good question, because it's very high for what they do get.
I'm just curious about the 7,000 to 12,000 increase in the new marijuana license fee, is that just an arbitrary number that was picked, or was it based off of anything? And I know that you mentioned it as perhaps a deterrent to opening new establishments in the future, but wanted to know a little bit more of the thought process around that, and then I have a second part.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Counselor. So, as you know, it's currently $7,000, I don't know how they set that number back in the day, but I'm sure some administrative fees and so on are part of that. But one of the things that was stressed heavily by the current outlets in Cortez was that they feel like there's too many, and they're worried about more coming in and saturating the market anymore and jeopardizing their operations. They've flat-out requested that we not allow any new licenses at all, and put some sort of moratorium on it. We really can't do that, but we can, you know, try to discourage it somewhat by doing this, but also, you know, try to, we're trying to find that balance between discouraging and having enough outlets and letting the free market do that. The free market anyway is going to, there's going to be some changes, my prediction is it's going to have to be. I just don't know that they're going to have the business to hold, but maybe I'm wrong, but just from the outside looking in, looking at their numbers, I think that the free market's going to jump in at some point.
And then a second part to that, as a matter of process, new marijuana license, licenses aren't issued until the establishment is, is ready to open, correct?
Can I ask Linda on that?
That is correct, Arlena. We keep the license here at the city of Cortez until the building has met the certificate of occupancy requirement. So, they do renew, as you know, the one that's out by the cemetery, they have renewed every single year, they have paid their fees to the city, but the license has not been issued until they are open.
So then, my next question for Patrick Coleman, is there any sort of, like, legal ramification or anything for the fact that New View is not yet open and we're choosing to increase those fees, or would they be like grandfathered in with the previous fees?
Yeah, I think they would be considered a pre-existing use under our current statute because they've submitted their applications.
That's correct, they have been issued a license by the city of Cortez.
They have been, okay.
And they're renewing their fee just like the other licensees are.
Okay.
They're paying the same fee to renew, they just haven't received their license until they're open.
Okay.
So, yes, they are considered a current license for us.
Great, so then, this will just be going forward, any proposed new business this fee would be applied to?
Correct, should someone else want to come in, that would apply to them, if this were to pass.
Lydia or David?
I just have a comment, I think it makes sense to drop our annual fee to meet the fees that are in the area, particularly since we've shown that it's not impacting the police force or other resources in our community.
I'm not sure I understand your question, Counselor.
Oh, did I misunderstand, the annual renewal fee? Did you, didn't you say that that one was, ours was higher than the rest of the surrounding communities?
Yeah, or regional areas, yeah.
Yeah. So I'm just saying, I think it, it makes sense to match the rest of the region.
Yes, okay, thank you, thanks.
I think the other benefit of raising the new, that can make up for lost profits, just secondarily, but I think it is a good approach, so I'd like to see this move forward.
Okay, thank you, Council. What I am hearing is that we are being asked to move forward and bring forth an ordinance that to be considered to lower these fees to $1,200. We will do that, and we will, of course, work with the marijuana industry and let them know what's happening on it, I'm sure they'll be pleased. I only wish there was more that we can do, but this is what we feel we can do, so thank you, Council.
Oh, I, sorry, and I just remembered, the one last thought I had, the, the net loss is also including two medical licenses that are already planning to not be renewed. So we would already be losing 10,000, so that's really only like 32,000, that's a loss.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, Council or Mayor, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on on our agenda to C, which is just general council discussion. Does anyone have a topic they'd like to bring up? All right, seeing none, we'll, we'll join the work session and we'll start our regular meeting at 7:30 PM. Thank you.
All right, this is the Cortez City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 22, 2023, and the time is 7:30 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Linda, can we have the roll call?
Kief offer.
Here.
Dehaven.
Here.
Spruul.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Yasi.
Here.
Dobree.
Here.
Medina.
Here. So we have a quorum tonight. And then I just ask for approval of the agenda as presented, or if any amendments need to be made.
Madam Mayor, okay. Madam Mayor, I move that council approve the agenda for August 22 as presented.
Second. Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Dehaven.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Yasi.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Kief offer.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye. All right, we're going to move on to number two on our agenda, the Consent Agenda. The listing under Consent Agenda is a group of items to be acted on with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by city council. Either the public or a council member may request that an item may be removed from the consent agenda at this, at the time prior to council's vote. I will ask, after I read the consent agenda, if a citizen or council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion. A, approval of the council work session and agenda minutes for August 8, 2023. B, approval of the expenditure list for August 22, 2023. C, approval of a special event permit for the Cortez Area Chamber of Commerce to host partnership event with Hospice of Colorado on Wednesday, September 20, 2023, on the premises located at 512 North Broadway, Cortez. D, approval of a renewal retail liquor store liquor license for Tubrose LTD DBA Cork and Bottle located at 443 East Main Street, Cortez. And E, approval of a change in premises application from Jody Jarling DBA Zoo Gallery located at 48 West Main Street, Cortez.
I move that council approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion made by Rainey and seconded by Yasi.
Yasi.
Aye.
Kief offer.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. All right, we're going to move on to number three on our agenda, Public Participation. There is no limit to the number of speakers, although public comment will be held to an overall time limit of 30 minutes. Speaker, speakers have a time limit of three minutes per person, may only speak once, and may not cede time to another commenter. And for those who haven't made it to public comment before, this is for anything that's not on our agenda under the public hearing, and we have comment cards in case folks want to do public comment. All right. And then we also have visual cues when you have a minute left, when you have 30 seconds, and when your time is up. Okay. All right, so I'd like to invite Charles Jeter to the podium and start with your name and address.
My name is Charles Jeter. I reside in July Vista, California. However, I have a membership to Four Corners Rifle and Pistol Club, which is at 1545 Lebanon. And this is regarding, and I'm a little confused, so let me know if this is the wrong three minutes. On the 8th, we had a presentation, so I'm actually commenting on that, but I gave out the packet for the other, which was actually why I had planned on being here.
Okay.
So the comment I have is that I, first off, I think that what you're doing is fantastic. I think this is head and shoulders above the process last time, and I really appreciated what they were talking about. Really, I'm only going to talk about two things, which is density and deconfliction, and that's in the single page that I handed out. Not be confused with the other single page, which is a model from Lexington, Kentucky, which also has a rural area, and they've been working with this since 1958, and they've had some really fantastic results. What I'm going to be talking about is the urban services boundary and things like that in the, in the future, but we'll worry about that later on. So what I recommend, this is about the density and use by right summary that we are looking at. I recommend collaboration with the county to mirror or emulate the land use management as seen in the Hando, which is the Lexington, Lexington, Kentucky page. As the county plan develops, integration of infill and redevelopment areas favors the density within the urban service area, which is a new term, and I'm hoping that people start thinking about that a little more, which dulls speculation in larger agricultural parcels within the county, which is the whole purpose of why I was here and why I was in at the county starting about six weeks ago. Providing incentives for certain precincts within Cortez will integrate well with the walkable community objectives, which I think everybody understands. I saw people outside today walking around. It's fantastic. That's what I want to see all the time. Okay? So we flip that over. We have a little bit of a deconfliction, and unfortunately, I'm showing, I'm throwing Shaq Powers at Region Nine under the, under the bus a little bit here, and he's not here to defend himself, but he advocated for an agricultural conversion located at Row 25 and Row G within Monizuma County on the August 8, 2023 Board of County Commissioners meeting. This is not favoring infill, nor is it favoring development of a walkable community. My recommendation to the council is to carefully monitor the regional objectives, which obviously conflict with the direct Cortez benefits. And we have one minute left, so I'm going to cover this real quick. This is a real pretty packet I put together, but you'll be seeing things like this from me in the future. I'm going to go ahead and tell you that what we see is that jobs drive home ownership, and I'm looking at having a scorecard with the businesses and with the job creation according to the age of the business. And then third page in. And then third page in, there's a bit of information here that you'll probably want to take a look at. I wanted to get this to you early. Basically, this is going to find, going to find out that net job creation across the country actually comes from new businesses. So keeping that in mind and looking at the packet in your spare time, it's part of the public record. And thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Charles. All right, I'd like to invite Lisa.
Good evening, council. My name is Lisa Passell, 515 Texas Street, City of Cortez resident and small business owner. An expenditure caught my eye in the 8823 council packet. It was $5,375 to employer council services. That's where all the questions started, and I quickly learned that expenditure traced back to Resolution 19. The council had approved that evening. One of my grandmas was a strong, God-fearing lady. I can clearly remember sitting at her kitchen table and having so many talks. Over and over, she would say, Lisa, whatever happens, do the right thing. The questions on the investigation expenditure soon led to the discovery of $22,903.75 having been spent to investigate an incident between a city employee and the city manager. You all have been chosen and/or hired as leaders for our city. You all are compassionate and intelligent people. You all have done some good and wonderful things for our community. However, Resolution 19 passed on 8823 wasn't one of them. An incident happened back in March. It was reported, it was investigated, and you had the opportunity to do the right thing. Sadly, you did not. You chose to sweep it under the rug, label the employee as a complainer, laugh, ridicule, and keep it from your constituents. This incident was labeled as a matter of jesting. From viewing the police report, it may have started as a jest, but the comments made were not. We are better than this. Cortez is better than this. No employee in our city should be afraid to report incidents. No employee should be laughed and ridiculed, no matter how small the item is. No employee, or any person for that matter, should ever be threatened with bodily harm, regardless of a joke or not. All of us know to do better, particularly career law enforcement individuals. I am asking all of you to take this matter seriously. Inform the public of what is happening and what will happen. Apologize. Listen to the victim. Take positive action rather than just passing sham resolutions. In light of the employee incident, I am asking you to table both Items 7C and 7D on tonight's agenda regarding amendments to the city manager and city attorney contracts. Both of these individuals have been treated well. Both of these individuals are involved in the employee matter, whether directly or indirectly. There is an active sheriff's investigation ongoing, and nothing should be amended until this issue has been dealt with fairly. Do the right thing, not the easy thing. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lisa. I have two comments that are regarding agenda items. I just need your guidance, Pat.
Madam Mayor, do you want to do Item 4A first, before you address those?
Okay. I just want to make sure. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, any other public comment not regarding, Jim? Do you want to make a comment?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So I'm Jim Mischke. I live on the southwest corner of North and Ash. The old IO Miller place. We bought it 44 years ago, and we've been fixing it up ever since. Problem is, we live only one block off of Main. And that's what I've kind of come to talk a little bit about tonight. I'll start by sharing with you that recently I saw a flyer for some sort of spiritual gathering. And the point that was made in this flyer was that the 20th and 21st century in Western civilization will probably be remembered for the production of two factors, noise and speed. So I would like to ask us to briefly consider how those two dimensions might be applied to Cortez in today's world. Recently, a young man was run down on Main Street in a crosswalk that apparently had flashing lights. And this is nothing new. Other people have, people have been killed on Main. I myself have avoided being killed or injured on Main three times, merely crossing in a crosswalk, going to the post office. And there are signs up that say, this is a state law. Pedestrians have the right of way. And yet, I think our observations are clear. Some motorists choose to abide by the law, and others do not. So what we are seeing here is, in my opinion, a situation that is out of control. Switching now from the idea of speed to the idea of noise, what I am finding is that since I have lived in the house, the decibel level on Main has continued to go up, up, up. I'm using Main only as a metaphor because there are thoroughfares, of course, throughout the city that are having the same problem. And so I submit to the city council and to my fellow citizens that Main Street is not a racetrack. Main Street, 30 seconds? How am I going to do this? Main Street is a part of the Colorado transportation system. What I'm hoping to do is create a new culture so that officers can stop motorists that have taken mechanisms off their car, put them on, and are making excessive noise. My research is based upon the World Health Organization's extensive research in terms of how high decibels have affected human life.
Thank you, Jim. Sorry.
One more thing. You may think that I'm merely a cranky veteran who is just tired of hearing noise in his home and wants a few more years of quiet before he goes. And you're right. That's what I want. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, any other commenters on non-agenda item, items? Okay. We're close the public participation section, and we're going to move on to four on our agenda presentations. 4A is the 2023 July Financial Statements, presented by Finance Director Kelly Kosky.
Good evening, mayor and council. In your packets this time are the financial statements for July of 2023. One item to note is that the Recreation Center Enterprise Fund is actually showing a net income of almost double of what we projected. I can remember clearly last year when we went through that budget discussion, because the prior year had been so odd that we weren't exactly sure how much more, we knew it would be more. I think even our Parks and Rec Director Creighton Wright wasn't sure that it was going to be that much more. So I just wanted to point that out. They're doing a great job halfway through the year. And we will definitely be increasing those revenues as we move through the 2024 budget. Also, I wanted to give you an update that the Finance Department was deliriously happy about. The 2021 audits are well underway. Drew Two had begun requesting accounts receivable and inventory backup documentation for his audit testing. Just yesterday, he requested the accounts payable backup documentation for audit testing. And in our emails back and forth, he confirmed that he was 70% done with substantive work and testing. So that is, that means for our staff, once we have those invoices, contracts, and copies of all the checks over to him for accounts payable, the next step is that he will be taking a look at the combined financial statements for the audit report. We'll have adjusting journal entries, if they are any, ending trial balance to send over to him and his blessing. And we are done with 2021 audit work on our end. So we're very happy. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, for the audits, oh, sorry. So then 2022 will be the last year to kind of get us into compliance because we don't need to start 23 until next year.
Correct. We are all very confident that we are on track to complete 2022 before the end of the year. Our 2023 then would not be due until June 30 of 2024. So we're almost there.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah.
And then I just want to commend the Rec Center. I think, you know, there's a lot more classes going on. You know, people are feeling more comfortable to come together. And I'm just, I'm glad to see the Rec Center thriving, so. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, we're going to move on to five on our agenda, Public Hearings. And before we dive into the items on our agenda, I just, I wanted to, I have a statement I just wanted to express to the, to the public. I'm concerned about the disrespect that's been exhibited by some towards our hardworking staff pertaining to certain land use issues. Our staff members have the duty and obligation to bring forward land use applications, make recommendations, and shepherd applications through the system. When staff makes recommendations, they only pertain whether, in their estimation, applications have been able to meet the criteria set forth in our Land Use Code for the applicant's proposed use. We, as the city council, are the decision makers, not our staff members. We have a responsibility to consider a number of factors, including weighing each application against our code, our comprehensive plan, and the impact upon our residents. Everyone deserves a fair and consistent process. We take this and every decision we make seriously. This is what we were elected to do. I would also like to mention that although we always like to collaborate and interact with our community members, sending your opinions directly to council members regarding quasi-judicial land use issues only serves to put us into an awkward position since we really are only able to consider information provided to us through the public hearing process. Therefore, in the future, we request that your opinions and other information you wish to have considered regarding quasi-judicial land use issues be sent directly to the clerk's office. This, those items will be provided to us as your council through the council's public hearing packet. And this will serve the need to provide fundamental fairness to everyone. And I just, you know, I appreciate the community's engagement. I just want to make sure that we're having respect from every angle and that, you know, we, we take this, every decision we make seriously. So we're going to start 5A, Ordnance Number 1322, Series 2023. As the public may have heard, there is a request to continue this. And I'd just like to read the, because this is part of the public record, the statement from the applicant. So dated August 21st, 2023. Dear Cortez City Council, this is my request to please continue the city council meeting scheduled for August 22nd, 2023 at 7:30 PM concerning the rezoning and conditioning use for the property located at 1050 Lebanon Road, Cortez, Colorado. Due to circumstances beyond my control, it appears that my mother, Mary Lannister, is passing. Anthony Moore has been called out on an assignment. We would not be able to attend and at this time could not be able to devote the 100% that is needed for this project. If the council could please consider continuing this until September 26th, 2023, we would be very grateful. Please let me know as soon as possible. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Anthony Moore and Mary Lancaster. All right. So there's been a request to continue this. So I don't know if staff needs to come up, or what our process?
Yeah, I don't believe any staff comment would be appropriate at this time. I would suggest that the council entertain a motion on the request for a continuance.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would just like to, I think, make a comment before we make a motion. You know, we, as Ms. Mayor Medina, sorry, mentioned, we have received a lot of comments from a lot of people. And this is a quasi-judicial matter. So it is treated differently than other things that come before city council. But we haven't had the chance to hear from the applicant. So for us to move forward tonight without hearing from the applicant, to me, becomes a just basic issue around fairness. We, they have not had the chance to come and say, this is what we'd like to do. We haven't had the chance to ask questions of them on this specific property. So I'd like for people in the audience to kind of keep that in mind. That's kind of the position that we're in right now. And that's the point of a public hearing, you hear from both sides. And they're clearly not here this evening, so.
And we recognize and appreciate your engagement.
Madam Mayor, as the applicants are unavailable, I would like to move that council continue the public hearing and second and final reading of Ordnance Number 1322, Series 2023, to September 26th, 2023 at 7:30 PM here in City Council Chambers.
Second. Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Yaasi.
Dobree.
Aye.
Kiefahfer.
Aye.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Yaasi.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye. Okay, B on our agenda, 5B is Resolution Number 21, Series 2023, with the same applicants. Do we have a motion to continue? Because this is for the conditional use.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the same motion as the applicants aren't available. I move that council continue Resolution Number 21, Series 2023, to September 26th, 2023, at 7:30 PM here in City Council Chambers.
Second. Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Dehaven.
Rainey.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Kiefahfer.
Aye.
Yaasi.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. And then I recognize this gives us a chance to take more comment. And we do read all your comments. So, you know, we encourage folks who haven't had a chance to yet either come to the meeting on the 26th or continue to submit comments via email or through Linda. And then Linda, will we, can we notice that again so that it goes back out to the public?
Madam Mayor, by continuing it, no further notice is required other than the publication of the agenda, which would occur four or five days before the hearing. But because anyone that presumably was interested in speaking at the hearing tonight is now aware that it has been continued. So the applicant doesn't have to go back through the entire, you know, re-mailing of notices as would be required if they were starting over.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to six on our agenda, Unfinished Business. We have none, so seven is New Business. 7A, Resolution Number 20, Series 2023. Presented by Nancy, our Contract City Planner.
Good evening. All right, we're going to go, and you're going to look at my messy laptop screen until we get that fixed. This is a bit of an unusual request. It's for a minor subdivision, a three-lot subdivision. If I can get this to come up, I'll show you that the three lots actually already exist and have for, looks like, over 65 years. The, the... The, the... He's working on it. There we go. Great, thank you. So the three lots in question are located on South Broadway, right in this is general area. Let me zoom in a little bit. So these three lots here, all zone commercial. And the request is really just to recognize those lots as legal parcels. It's, the history's pretty confusing, but they were first created in 1958 with an approval by the city planning commission at that time. They were recorded then with the clerk and recorder in 1959. Although there's no record anywhere of city council having approved the plat, we have looked and apparently sta, multiple staff members have looked since approximately 1996 in an attempt to confirm whether or not this previous subdivision plat was legally divided, the parcels. In or about 1996, city staff determined that they were not legal and did not, and that the city did not recognize them. Since that time, various title companies and owners have made some attempts to confirm whether they're legal or not. At this point, the applicant submitted the minor subdivision plat to fully legally subdivide the parcels along the existing property lines, just really to clear up these ongoing title issues. To make things a little more confusing, well, maybe unconfuse them, the lots as proposed do meet all of our standards for the existing commercial zone. But last week, after we mostly reviewed this, we got contacted by CDOT who had some concerns with this, with the subdivision. So their concerns are whether or not this existing access point into the property was the right one. At the time they contacted me, they suggested that this driveway here is perhaps the more reasonable future location for serving the entire area. After site visits with the city engineer and a lot more discussion, the determination was made that perhaps this location is a better location to serve long-term the future area. So, long story short, CDOT is requesting that we place a 60-foot access easement, a public access easement approximately in the existing location of this access, where the existing driveway is. I think you'll see on your plat that they're also proposing a 40-foot access easement down to the lower lot to make sure that all three of the parcels have legal access. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the resolution, which would approve the minor subdivision. We have our standard two conditions. Well, our standard condition required meeting the criteria of the utility provider, CDOT, etc. Because CDOT's request was a little unusual, we added a condition regarding the location of a public access easement between two of the lots. Honestly, CDOT has said that they're open a little bit to whether it's right here or slightly different location. I have, and then the third condition is regarding the renaming of the parcels as requested by the GIS coordinator. At this point, I'm available for questions. I also want to ask that you call the applicant up before we close this. I, he has told me that he's okay with that condition, but I'd like to make sure we get that on the record. He's wearing a blue hat. He's, oh, there he is. He took the hat off. Okay. Are there any questions?
I don't see that, so you're talking about this, this plat is going to be amended then and have that?
Prior to recording, yes.
Okay. And then I, I guess?
And it just, sorry, it just came up really a week and a half ago. So we didn't have time to get them to amend that for you.
And then that eastern or northern access that's on a completely different parcel, what are, what is the easement language or recorded easement around that?
Our understanding is these parcels do not have legal access to that. And that was the reason that that couldn't be used. But again, after further discussion and looking, this, this one's actually in a better location as far as site distance and safe access in the determination of the city engineer.
And so then if we approve this, CDOT, if, and CDOT gets what they need, they'll grant a permit that'll be on record then?
Correct.
Okay.
And the idea, I mean, it's, it's out in the distance. They'd grant the easement here. They only have the right to do it right to the back of their property line. There's a different property owner on this narrow strip. And then a third property owner in the back here. So everyone would, the other two property owners would have to cooperate in the future for this 60-foot access easement to become access, fully compliant with city standards to the parcels back to the east.
Okay. All right, I'd like to invite the applicant up.
Mark Mickelson, ABC Fire and Safety on South Broadway is basically who's doing this. And we're in agreement with what has been discussed here as far as any changes or anything that may come up in the future.
Great.
Any questions?
You're okay with that access point with CDOT then?
Yes, yes, I understand. I personally have talked to some other people with CDOT. And yeah, it's not an issue whatsoever.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, any questions or discussion with council? Or do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that council approve resolution number 20, series 2023, approving the minor subdivision to be known as Mickelson Subdivision, located at 1552, 1602, and 1702 South Broadway, Cortez, Colorado, with the conditions as outlined in the resolution.
Second. A motion made by Yasi and seconded by Dobry.
Keef offer.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
De Haven.
Aye.
Yasi.
Aye.
Dobry.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye. All right, we're on to 7B on our agenda, the appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Presented by Lynda.
Good evening, city council. Tonight, council held an interview with Ms. Emily Waldron, who is present in the audience. We did receive three applications from community members interested in serving on planning and zoning to have decided not to continue with the process. And Emily was our last applicant. So council can appoint Ms. Emily for a three-year term or we can re-advertise, whatever you guys advise us to do.
Okay. Thank you. So yeah, we, we interviewed Emily during our workshop. For anyone who wants to reference that. Any questions or motion?
I move that council appoint Emily Waldron to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term.
Second. Motion made by Yasi and, or De Haven and seconded by Yasi.
Dobry.
Aye.
Keef offer.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Rainey.
Aye.
De Haven.
Yeah.
Yasi.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Okay, we're going to move on to C on our agenda, amendment to the city manager employment contract. Presented by Patrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was given instructions and direction by council to prepare a draft contract that would amend the city manager's employment agreement. The terms that were suggested are in this draft. Obviously, it is a draft. And so the council is free to make whatever decisions it chooses to regarding the draft amendment. The city manager's employment contract stipulates that each year on an annual basis, the council should consider amendments to the contract. And you did do his annual evaluation. And based on that, the recommended changes were implemented into the draft contract. And now it's up to you to decide how you want to address that.
Great. So we did Drew's evaluation and we've, what's that? Drew, yeah. And we felt strongly about his performance. And we, we appreciate all you've done for the last year. And you've saved the, the city a lot of money. And then although this, you know, sounds like a high salary for our community, this is right in line with this kind of profession and the region. And I'm amenable to the requests that you have in, in your contract, so.
I'm going to just kind of give a, a little bit of a personal anecdote. And I don't know, you know, I know times that I haven't been on city council. And I have been a couple of times. I don't necessarily pay attention to every little thing that happens with city council. But at one point, last year, I think, maybe the year before, Kelly Kosky and Drew Sanders did some investigating regarding some of the outstanding loans that the city had. For example, water loan that we took out in, I believe, 1985. I think I was a junior in high school when that loan was taken out. And, and we spent tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars on that loan. And over the years, actually, probably several times had the capacity to pay that loan along with some other loans off. And so I really kind of pushed it with Drew and, and Kelly to a degree. And, and I think both of them really did the legwork and decided that that was a priority and that that was something that we could do. And it didn't make sense anymore for us to be paying an exorbitant amount of money on a, on a loan. And so I can just attest to the fact that Drew has saved the city. I'm going to, I'm going to go out on a limb. And I'm looking at Kelly here. Not just tens of thousands of dollars, but ultimately, if we had kept those loans, hundreds of thousands of dollars in payments. And so that's something that I really appreciate because that's a priority for me. And so that's why I really do support Drew and I support this contract.
Any comments? Any questions regarding what's being proposed? All right, motion?
I move that council approve the amendment to the employment contract for city manager Drew C. Sanders to become effective May 29, 2023. Uh, but before I do that, yeah, that's it.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Spruul and seconded by Keef offer.
Spruul.
Yes.
Yasi.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Dobry.
Aye.
Keef offer.
Aye.
De Haven.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. Okay, we're going to move on to D on the agenda, the amendment to the city attorney employment agreement.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am also presenting an amendment to the city attorney's employment agreement. He had his evaluation at the executive session held on July 25, 2023, at which time the council gave me instructions to amend his contract, which are set forth in the agreement that is attached as part of the packet. I don't, you know, have any additional information other than what specifically you gave me was put into this contract draft agreement.
I think evaluating you, Patrick, over the last year has made me realize that bringing in an attorney full-time was the right decision to do and hiring you was the right decision to do. You've contributed a lot and you've cleaned up a lot. And I, I feel legally safe with you, you know, there for us, so. Thank you.
And I just wanted to say one other thing, that I just appreciate your work in building a legal department here. I think for a long time, we had been having a contract attorney. We kind of outgrew that, I would say, some time ago. And to be able to address that and have you help us build a legal department and, and address all the legal needs of the city has been appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just really appreciate your expertise. And I, I do think that, you know, once people get to know you, they realize how good of a fit you are with the city of Cortez, not just as our attorney, but as a citizen and who lives, you know, just outside of Cortez. You're a Colorado guy, Western slope guy. You definitely have the chops. You understand what it takes to be a municipality on the Western slope. So I appreciate that, Pat.
And it's just been so valuable to have you come in and really hit the ground running. You already had such an impressive resume with experience at counties and other municipalities that has really benefited our city. And I really appreciate that.
I move that council approve the amendment to the employment contract for city attorney J. Patrick Coleman to become effective June 26, 2023.
Second.
Motion made by Spruul, seconded by Dobry.
Yasi.
Aye.
Dobry.
Aye.
Keef offer.
Aye.
De Haven.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Rainey.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. Okay, we're going to move on to eight on our agenda, draft resolutions and ordinances. We have none tonight. So nine is city attorney report.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Then we'll move on to 10, city managers' report.
Yeah, good evening, mayor and council. I have four items for you this evening. First is that the city of Cortez has five employees from various departments who will be participating in the 2023-24 Leadership Montezuma Leadership Training Class. This is a two-year program of the leadership training focused on industries and sectors within Montezuma County. The program is designed to promote and engage in, promote engaged and informed community leaders and expand their understanding of local resources, organizations, and systems. Applicants are chosen in part by their ability to be able to use the knowledge and skills and part of by Leadership Montezuma for the long-term benefit of Montezuma County, but also the city of Cortez for here. And we're very proud to partner with them in this endeavor. Secondly, the 2024 city council budget hearing is slated for September 23, 2023. It'll be here in the council chambers. That's a Saturday. The proposed 2024 city budget will be presented and discussed with council at that point. The new 2024 Community Support Grant Application for Local Grant Requests Up to $5,000 has been posted on the city website. Applications will be accepted through Friday, October 13, 2023, from organizations that provide programs for citizen welfare, arts, and education. Programming and activities must be accessible to the city of Cortez community. So anybody who's interested in receiving that, we encourage you to submit an application. Lastly, the Cortez Library has installed a children's story walk at, in Centennial Park from the playground to the library. It involves 13 different little signs and that all are part of a story. It tells a story of the fun, of the fun of going back to school and also includes different activities for the children. Library director Isabella Sharpenstein and the children's librarian Maya McElroy have been developing the concept since mid-July 2023 with the help of Building Maintenance, who built the storyboards and were able to install the project on August 21, 2023. That concludes my report. Any questions from council on that? Okay. With that being said, and I think there was a public comment about what I'm about to speak about, there's clearly been some interaction going and some, an investigation that occurred that involved me. That's no secret. But at this point, I would like to take a moment, if the mayor will permit, to address... if the mayor will permit, to address the community and the council on this. This is addressed to the mayor, council, and members of the Cortez community. I'm addressing you as an interaction, about an interaction that occurred on March 2, 2023, between a fellow employee who approached me and initiated the encounter and me. The time has arrived when I can be open with the community about what has occurred, since I am the administrative leader of this organization. As you may know, I am directly accountable to the city council, and therefore my actions and any personnel action regarding me are addressed directly by the city council. In addition to what occurred during the interaction in question, what is important here is that I, as the city manager, do what it takes to maintain the public trust we have earned during the past two years, as well as demonstrate citywide to our team members and the community alike that everyone in this organization is held accountable and the process is applied equally to all of us. That starts with me. As the city manager, I do my best to engage with everyone I encounter in city facilities. I have been very successful at going out of my way to interact with nearly all of the employees I encounter and have developed a very strong relationship and rapport with many of them. Given these literal, literally hundreds of interactions, I have encountered a wide variety of responses and other engagements, sometimes colorful, from the diverse personalities who work at the city. Part of being a good leader is the ability to be approachable, and that is part of my goal during the various interactions I have with others. In fact, I consider this an important part of my job. Once in a while, interactions are not as smooth as I would have hoped, and I know others I interact with sometimes may feel the same. My intention for this particular encounter was no different. It was meant to be a quick, like-hearted interaction, intending to be kind and connect with the other person in the same joking manner as the other person exhibited in initiating the encounter. This interaction lasted approximately five seconds and occurred in the presence of several other staff members. During this interaction, I did not do or say anything. I would not feel comfortable performing in front of my mother, grandmother, or anyone else for that matter. Indeed, my mindset was that my actions and words were out in the open and being observed by everyone in the room. Whether they actually saw or heard it is immaterial, since I was acting as if they did. Everything I said was meant to be self-deprecating, and therefore therein lay the lighthearted humor in the situation from my perspective. In other words, my comments were meant to be harmless and pointed at me alone in response to this person's ongoing actions. I did not make any threats towards this person. I received no indication at the time that my words were misheard, misinterpreted, or that the interaction between us was anything but positive and jovial. Had I known my actions were misinterpreted, I would have immediately taken steps to clear the air. I never want to end an interaction with somebody on bad terms, if at all possible. I had no intention of causing offense, rather, my intention was quite the opposite. Even so, as the leader of this, in this situation, I am both responsible and accountable for all my actions and how they are interpreted by others. I take that very seriously. I always strive to do the right thing, and no matter the consequences. In this case, I take it seriously that my response, no matter how well-intended, was interpreted by the other party, or was interpreted by the other party to this interaction differently than I intended, and I regret that. It was not intentional. I have not had the access to the results of the investigation, I have not been part of the city council executive session discussions about this matter, and rightfully so. I sincerely regret that this complaint, the complaint on this matter was reportedly not handled adequately and in compliance with city policy. I too insist upon a workplace wherein all employees can be heard and taken seriously when complaints are made. I was obviously not aware of how this complaint was handled, but what is clear is that we need to do better, and we will. I support the findings of the city council and will promptly follow its orders to the letter, and we are in progress on doing that. Regarding the process in this case, it was conducted in an appropriate manner in compliance with best practices. In order to ensure a fair and unbiased process, the incident was referred to an outside entity for investigation. Outside legal counsel was retained for the city council in order to ensure fairness and avoid any perceived conflicts with the legal advice I receive in my official capacity from the city attorney. That investigation was reportedly thorough and took approximately three months to complete. The city council considered that investigation, and the council's resolution of that matter is reflected in Resolution 192023 that was passed two weeks ago. I understand that the complaining party in this case has now reported this incident to the Cortez Police Department, who in turn has referred this incident to the Monizuma County Sheriff's Office for Investigation, again, in order to avoid any appearance of bias or favoritism. Although I respect this person's right to report this incident to the police, I deny any criminal or undue wrongdoing in this incident and welcome an appropriate police investigation. I sign Drew C. Sanders. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Drew. Okay, we're going to move on to 11 on our agenda, City Council Committee Reports. A is the mayor's report on the workshop. So during our workshop, we interviewed our final applicant for the single opening we have on Planning and Zoning Commission, that was Emily Waldron, and we did approve her to join the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then we had a discussion about a proposal for changing the annual renewal fees for marijuana retailers. We discussed potentially bringing to council lowering those fees to be in line with the region and best practices. And then there was nothing during general council discussion, so that was our workshop. So we'll move on to B on the agenda, Other Board Reports. I'll start with David.
Yes, we had the Cortez Public Art Advisory Committee meeting first Monday of this month, and regarding the emergence of the Cortez Creative Alliance, we have started the ball rolling. We have a brochure on murals, which is rapidly becoming more and more conspicuous as the city of murals evolves. And as suggested by fellow councillor Dee Haven, we would like to put this guide on hand, online, and connect it with a QR code, and maybe even a geophysical map, so tourists can, while visiting one mural, can look at their map and see where the next mural is. So we're really behind this. We think it's really an incredible step forward, so.
Last week, the Monizuma County Homelessness Prevention Coalition held an event at Veterans Park where they dedicated a bench in memorial of all of the lost friends and relatives in our community and county who were passed due to homelessness or exposure. It was a really successful event. Mayor Medina attended, as did many other members of the community, housed and unhoused. And yeah, there's a quote under the bench that says, "The act of being a good neighbor must always begin with us," and that's from Kelly Barnhill, who's a children's author, so just wanted to share that.
Thanks.
Last Friday, I attended the Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Advisory Board Meeting. We had two folks from the public come and make presentations. Bob Bright came and talked about bike trails throughout the city, which is, I think, something that we talked about and kind of our priorities moving forward. And then we also heard from April Bison about a volunteer wildlife study at the Carpenter Open Space, so we can kind of formalize that a little bit. We talked, again, about the Pocket Park Playgrounds on the south side of town quite a bit. Some folks also went on a tour, and I'll mention that again here in just a moment. We talked about budget planning for 2024, so we talked about some programming things such as community events and sports development, program development. Of course, maintenance, that's always ongoing when you have parks and recreation center and a variety of things. And then some special projects, I think most notably, I'll just call out the Parks Master Plan and just moving forward with that, so some of these other pieces will really fall into place. If there is any input at this point on the Pocket Parks in the south, myself and member Quigley are going to be visiting folks in the neighborhood, two blocks on, all the way around those parks, and talking to people about what they're going to be and kind of, you know, hopefully an aspirational kind of talk and get people jazzed to start really using them, so really looking forward to that.
Nothing to report.
I just wanted to remind council and the community that tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM in the Mesa Verde Room, which is the fishbowl room right over there, there will be a presentation on the commercial and auto tourism historic preservation survey that was conducted over about the last year to maybe 15 months. So the public and council are invited to that.
Is that virtual as well as in person?
I don't, I actually am not sure if that's virtual as well.
Okay, because I have a Zoom link.
Then it may be.
Okay. All right, thank you, council. We'll move on to other items of business, number 12 on our agenda. We don't have an executive session tonight, so we have another public participation section. I see Linda going to see if there's any comment cards. In this one, there is no limit to the number of speakers and no overall time limit, but speakers still have a time limit of three minutes per person, may only speak once, and may not cede time to another commenter. Okay. I'd like to invite Charles Jeter to the mic, make sure that it's on.
My plan tonight was actually to talk about data and to talk about asking the council to go ahead and look at my packet and think about asking for the data sources on some land use stuff, but after listening to the city manager, I wanted to go ahead and talk about leadership instead. So a little bit of my background, I was a crewman in a S3B Viking carrier bear JDR craft. I was a single enlisted aircrewman. I flew with three officers, I was trained in using nuclear weapons, I flew with the executive officer of my squadron. So if the mayor is the commanding officer of the town, then actually Drew would be the executive officer. Technically, I guess, he's the manager, so he's the CO. But the point is that between that, becoming a licensed private investigator, working on journalism, and having a press pass and things like that, and the other last 30 years of my life, and also including being a whistleblower in a major corporation, I've got a pretty good nose for leadership. And I can tell you that I believe it's night and day on a positive side. From my interaction I've seen with engagement with your staff, the last session when I was waiting for two and a half hours or so for this to happen, that doesn't happen in a vacuum. I think that the mayor has done a really good job of presenting process and explaining to people. I think that my engagement with, you know, Mr. Sanders and other staff, I've always seen eye contact, nobody's had any kind of a, an issue that you would see when you sniff a problem with the culture. So I can't say that I can try, I can give you a positive aspect compared to a negative before he got here, but I can tell you it changed for the last two or three years since I've actually had engagement with staff. And I thought that was important to put on the record, because it doesn't happen in a vacuum. The Operation Coolit handout that I gave you is actually something I was, I was kind of going to only give to one of your staff, because some of your people can rat this poor lady out, but somehow somebody, I caught them being good, and what they did was they came out and they dropped off little ice creams. And I wanted to go, I think I mentioned to the city manager that that was a leadership thing, that I actually did a, I did a small team-building exercise, which I also have, and I can, I'll give it the copies to the city manager. And I wanted to, I wanted to tell people that that doesn't happen. That little tiny thing means a lot in the culture. Also, the fact that I was talking to your director of Parks and Recreation, I was talking to Kelly Kosky, who, by the way, I will tell you, I'll take 10 seconds of my 30 seconds and tell you that I really think it's a good thing to spend the 80,000 on the high-definition color things. But you don't get this culture where people share things, and also, of course, the police chief, who actually bird-dogged me towards San Miguel County's deed restriction stuff. You don't get that stuff in a vacuum. That happens because people are open and they want to share information, and they feel like they're collaborating on a positive goal. That doesn't happen without top-down as well as bottom-up leadership. So thank you very much for your time, that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Charles. I really appreciate that. You know, I'm really proud of council, I think we're trying hard to do our best, and proud of staff, and I feel like the city's going in a really good direction, and it's good to hear that we are doing the right thing, hopefully.
I'm highly skeptical, and I have size 11 half boots, and a lot of people in the county have felt them, so I would not give you that information if I didn't believe it. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Do we have any other commenters? All right. Okay, so then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion made by Dee Haven and seconded by Yaasi.
Rainey.
Aye.
Dee Haven.
Aye.
Yaasi.
Aye.
Keef offer.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Dobry.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. All right, thank you all for being here tonight.[1777.13]